You feel me fading, but I'm still here. Standing where we began, holding on, no fear. You think I'll be the one to turn, but I never will. My heart stays steady, waiting on this hill. You feel the distance, I feel it too. But no matter how far you go, I'll always be with you. I've loved you from the start, I'll love you till the end. Don't walk away from this love we could mend. Can't feel the distance, I feel it too. But no matter how far you go, I'll always be with you. I've loved you from the start, I'll love you till the end. Don't walk away from this love we could mend. But many times can I say it's true? That everything I did, I did for you. Even in the silence, my heart speaks clear. No matter the distance, I'm always here, I'll always be here. You're the one for me. You mean everything, everything you see. Everything to me. From now until eternity. Your light flickers and still I wait. Loving from afar, standing by faith. You think you've lost me, but I've never left. I'm right where you last found me, love, holding on to what's left. You feel the distance, I feel it too. But no matter how far you go, I'll always be with you. I've loved you from the start, I'll love you till the end. Don't walk away from this love we could mend. I'll always be loving you! Loving you! Loving you! Loving you! I'll be the one to hold on strong, even when the nights feel so long. No empty words, no broken dreams, my love's still here, pressing at the seams. I'm still waiting, running you from this place. Never turn away, I'm not leaving. The race, the race. The door's still open, just for you. I've always been here, loving you. I'm always here loving you! Loving you! I'm for you.
なぜ君なんだ何の色もない
静かに夜明ける侍の魂も揺るごとし死して名を残せ血に染まる鋼の道三重四千丈道終わぬの名を刻め死して名を残せ血に染まる鋼の道三重四千丈に散り終わぬようなを刻め駆け抜ける風の中鋼の刃は空を裂く無数の敵恐れず命燃やして立ち向かう闇を裂くその瞳胸に宿る名誉一撃で魂が語る死して名を戦いは続く死して闘望の誓い死しても恥知らず鋼の心砕ける終わぬ名を刻め血に染まる大地で旗を掲げ叫びを上げる刃がひらめき魂はもゆ敵は無数だが恐れはなし夜が明ける頃には三重四は乱ちるだが彼らの名誉は地獄に響き続ける鐘は吹いた刃を染め死神の声響く高さの果て縄残る彼らの名を刻め守れ名誉のために最後の一撃を放て三重四倒れても死しても名を戦う静かに風は闇残るは侍の名名誉の声静かに汗は闇残るは侍の名名誉の声
I was spiraling Caught in my own head Couldn't find my way back Felt like I was already dead But somehow you reached me In ways you'll never know You pulled me from the edge When I was ready to let go I was on a break, couldn't find my way Lost in the haze of another dark day You were just a voice, just a distant sound But somehow you pulled me back from the ground You'll never know what you did for me Your words were a lifeline though you couldn't see Every breath you took, every word you said Kept me from slipping, kept me out of my head You saved me quietly without a clue You carried me through though I never told you When the weight was too much and the world felt wrong You were the reason I could hold on You saved me quietly And you'll never know How your light helped me keep my glow I watched from the sidelines afraid to show The scars you healed though you'd never know Your laughter, your presence kept me awake In the middle of storms I just couldn't take You'll never see the part you played How your voice cut through the nights I was afraid When the walls were closing in, I couldn't breathe You were the reason I didn't leave You saved me quietly without a clue You carried me through though I never told you When the weight was too much and the world felt wrong You were the reason I could hold on You saved me quietly And you'll never know How your light helped me keep my glow I won't tell you, you'll never know The battles you helped me fight All alone, but somewhere in the silence There's a part of me that you've saved, that's finally free You saved me quietly without a clue You carried me through though I never told you When the weight was too much and the world felt wrong You were the reason I could hold on You saved me quietly And you'll never know How your light helped me keep my glow In the quiet moments where no one can see You were the reason I found a way to be To stay, to fight, to hold on tight And you'll never know You saved my life And though you'll never understand what you've done How you held me close without knowing you won I'll carry this with me silently through the days Because of you, I found the strength to stay
Oh, so easy All you gotta do is move on Go find another one Nothing you can do but move through it Oh, it's so simple Pick yourself up, dust yourself off Get back on that horse You'll feel better when you do it Oh, it's so easy Oh, it's so easy Oh, it's so easy And I try, I try to move through it I try, I try to prove I can do it And I try, and I try, and I try And I try Trying isn't doing, trying isn't working I carry this burden, life feels uncertain Nothing is working, I keep on hurting Oh, it's so easy Oh, it's so easy Oh, it's so easy She told me she loved me She didn't wanna hurt me She told me she was unworthy I never agreed with any of that She chose to feel it And she ran, she left me hurting And she ran, left me this burden And she ran, and she ran, and she ran I'm so damn tired of carrying this burden My mind's so wired, I'm so uncertain Is there a plan I don't understand? Is there someone to lend a hand? Is there a guide to cross this land? Or am I forever damned? Oh, it's so easy Oh, it's so easy Oh, it's so easy Oh, can you please, please me? And tell me the words to relieve me? And help a ghost to leave me? I want her gone, please believe me And I tried, and she ran And I tried, and she ran And I tried, and she ran Oh, please believe me, it's not so easy I'm doing what I can so I can even stand And I won't fall in front of the others Just to make it through the pain Once I had something, now I have nothing Used to have something, now left with nothing She told me she loved me She didn't wanna hurt me She told me she was unworthy I never agreed with any of that She chose to feel it And she ran, and she ran, she left me hurting And she ran, left me this burden And she ran, and she ran, and she ran, and she ran Please believe me, it's not so easy Oh, please believe me, it's not so easy Oh, please believe me, it's not so easy
I am Here I stay I am, here I stay Stay, 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 stay away! I learned nothing from yesterday Moments slipped, they fade away Lost in the hours, chasing time Repeating rhythms out of line I learned nothing from yesterday Caught in the echoes of lost delay Minutes fall like grains of sand Slipping swiftly through my hand But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday Here I am, here I try I learned nothing from yesterday night I learned nothing from yesterday Shadows linger in disarray Paths once clear now twist and wind Lessons buried, hard to find But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday Here I am, here I try I learned nothing from yesterday night But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday Here I am, here I try I learned nothing from yesterday night I am Here I stay I am, here I stay Stay, stay, stay away! I learned nothing from yesterday Moments slipped, they fade away Lost in the hours, chasing time Repeating rhythms out of line I learned nothing from yesterday Caught in the echoes of lost delay Minutes fall like grains of sand Slipping swiftly through my hand But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday Here I am, here I try I learned nothing from yesterday night I learned nothing from yesterday Shadows linger in disarray Paths once clear now twist and wind Lessons buried, hard to find But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday Here I am, here I try I learned nothing from yesterday night But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday Here I am, here I try I learned nothing from yesterday night I learned nothing from yesterday Shadows linger in disarray Paths once clear now twist and wind Lessons buried, hard to find But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday Here I am, here I try I learned nothing from yesterday night I learned nothing from yesterday Moments slipped, they fade away Lost in the hours, chasing time Repeating rhythms out of line I learned nothing from yesterday Caught in the echoes of lost delay Minutes fall like grains of sand Slipping swiftly through my hand But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday night I learned nothing from yesterday Shadows linger in disarray Paths once clear now twist and wind Lessons buried, hard to find But here I am, here I stay I learned nothing from yesterday Here I am, here I try I learned nothing from yesterday night I learned nothing from yesterday Shadows linger in disarray